Meeting for Tuesday, January 24th, 2017, 6:00 PM is now called to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Our city clerk, please take a role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Mayor Potem Zelensky?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City manager?
City attorney?
Here.
Assistant.
Our citizen comments on agenda-related items. Are there any citizens that wish to speak on the agenda-related items? If you would, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Ruth Pratt. I'm here for my son, James Pratt, to dine at home. Sorry, he was unable to get out of work. He works at the hospital. They had an emergency, but he was planning to be here. I'm going off the cuff because this was like 15 minutes before 6:00. He's like, I need you to go. So anyway, he has had a problem with a fence that was put in by his neighbor, four inches from his garage. And when I say four inches, I mean that's where the fence is. I'm not talking about where the holes are, the hole dismantled. He had a, he's had a survey, she's had a survey. This has been an ongoing issue. And if you ask me, it's a bunch of crap. And I implore all of you to drive by his house on Second and Walnut and see if you would like what the city allowed to happen to him. I do believe this is a misunderstanding. I think it was a total botched job. We know someone else who put up a fence and they were right there telling him to move it. We called when this was happening and it was like, it's a civil matter. Hadn't even been placed yet and they told us it's a civil matter. My son has spent a lot of money on an attorney and he is continuing to fight this. But the problem is, he turned in for FOIA to get some Freedom of Information Act. The price that he was given, which is what you're going to vote on tonight, was like $239.92 to get the paperwork. You, on the thing that he received, you had the chief of police making copies. Are you kidding me? And charging him the wages that the chief of police would make to make copies for his FOIA. I, I'm sorry. I know darn well Chief Bachman was not going to be standing there at the copier making those copies for him. Now, his attorney has contacted the city, but I just would like all of you to think, if you turned in for some, for some information that you would like, what you would think about getting a bill for that kind of price for paperwork? I understand there's a charge per page. I understand there's a charge for somebody doing it. But how did we go from four and a half hours' worth of work and the chief making the copies to now I think you've got it narrowed down to two hours' worth of work and I think it's going to be around $119 or something? I, I just think that this situation has went on far too long. You did send my son a letter that said that the fence was going to have to be moved. The letter he received had no date by when the fence needed to be moved. Just said it's got to be moved. She received the same letter, but nobody gave her a timeframe. Nobody said first thing in the spring. What kind of, you know, when you're sending out an official letter, there should be dates or say by May 1st of 2017. I understand that the ground is frozen now. This has been going on for a long time, people. But there should have been a date on that letter about when the fence needed to be moved by, not, not 10 years from now. So I would like you guys to all check into this. Some of you maybe have not even heard of this issue, but this has been something else. We even got a copy from Denise Blaisley that my son was able to get at first and it says, June called, she's over by about two inches. No problem. Well, it might be no problem to June, but it is a problem to my son when you cannot even paint your garage because the fence is so darn close. I tried washing his window when he first moved in because it was a foreclosure and she was upset because I was standing on her grass to do so. I've contacted neighbor after neighbor who's owned that house and every one of them says, is she still alive? And they say what, how horrible their life was because of this neighbor. I've tried to deal with her. I just think that the city is responsible in some way, shape, or form. When the, when the fence is going up, someone should have been there, come and take a look and put a stop to it, not say, this is a civil matter. What if my son didn't have money to be fighting this? There are people out there that don't have a lot of money. My son makes good money and I'll tell you what, he'll spend every penny he has to, to get this issue solved because he thinks he was done wrong and I believe he was too. Do I feel he should have to spend his money on this? No, I don't. My husband and I have lived here for 24 years. We have loved Manistee, but I'll tell you what, this has given us a new foresight into whether we want to continue to live within the city limits. This is craziness. You think, how could that happen? This is something you see on TV. But it did and it does. And I think the FOIA's and all that for asking for the information, I think the price was so high because they didn't want him to have some of that information. So I appreciate you listening and I do implore you all to drive by Second Street and Walnut, brown house right on the corner. You can't miss it. The fence is practically touching the garage. And by the way, it's a fence that goes nowhere. It starts and it doesn't meet the other fence. It's just a fence. There's no beginning and there's no end. Thank you.
Are there any other citizen comments? Yes, Mr. Bradford.
Good evening. Glenn Zarin, 321 Thistle Street. Just wanted to address the subject on the public hearing for the application for the community development block grant. As a conservative, I'm always allowed to take out debt or to incur other charges that we all have to live with as citizens here. However, this one, I would like to speak in favor of it because that area needs the improvement. It needs to be boosted up. Again, we have some developments starting there, which I think is an excellent thing. And personally, I think this would be an excellent idea if we can assist them with that entire development. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, thank you. New business. We have a public hearing on the application for a $1 million community development block grant for the former North Channel Outlet property. The city of Manistee is applying for a $1 million community development block grant to help fund the restoration of the former North Channel Outlet building. The grant will be used for blight elimination and historic restoration. A public hearing is required to allow the public to provide input into the proposed grant application. At this time, council could take action to hold a public hearing for the proposed community development block grant application. Are there any public comments?
Mayor Smith, and I can just make a few comments quickly. John Grootheis, the developer, was planning on being here, but I think we had a mix-up on the time. I think he thought it was seven when it was actually six. I don't think he's going to make it, but he was just going to come by and just maybe give you a quick update. So there was a miscommunication around the time. But I think we're moving ahead nicely. It'll be good to get the third-party administrator on board to deal with all the CDBG requirements, which are quite voluminous and complex. But this is one of the necessary steps in the process and once the public...
Hearing's done tonight, then we'll be forwarding that on to the MEDC so they can continue their action, get this approved and get it going. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Bradford, this, this grant, it's a grant. It's not a loan.
That's correct.
And it's not costing us anything. All we're doing is concurring with the, with the project.
It's a grant to the city and then we pass that through to the developer and there's a whole bunch of requirements that we're going to comply with, with assistance of the third-party administrator. But you're correct, it's a grant, it is not a loan.
I'm just trying to get a little background for the public. The, this is to clean up a blighted condition. Is this what the money's for?
It's for, it's for blight restoration and historical renovation of the North Channel Outlet building. Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bradford, the third-party administrator, that is a state requirement that we have a certified third-party administrator.
The state strongly, strongly, strongly recommends that we have a certified third-party administrator.
Okay. No cost to the city, that's from the first...
It's coming out of the grant process. Correct. The gentleman that spoke earlier, to get his records or his comments on the record, probably should come up and speak now at the public hearing. If you'd like to leave those in the record. If you'd make a call.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to formally express my support for this grant and particularly I like the way it's going to be handled, too, with the third-party administrator keeps it clean, will not negatively impact our city and will definitely help an area that deserves some assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We don't need any action on that item.
No, just need to close the public hearing.
Okay. I will conclude the public hearing. Next item is consideration of a Freedom of Information Cost Estimate Appeal by James Pratt. James Pratt submitted a Freedom of Information Act request to the city. An estimate of the cost for complying with the request was developed. Mr. Pratt feels the cost estimate is excessive and is now appealing the cost estimate to the city. At this time, council could take action to approve the revised cost estimate associated with Mr. Pratt's Freedom of Information Act request in response to his appeal.
I'll make the motion. That was, well, that was the 119.
Yes.
Right?
We have a motion. Do we have...
I'll second.
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Potem Zelensky, the second by Councilmember Whitlock. Is there any discussion?
Well, the, the original cost was 240, roughly. And we cut it in half to 119. That's where it...
116.70.
Total, 119.96.
The original was 239.92.
Okay. 238.70.
That's fair. I believe it's fair.
I guess, playing devil's advocate. Does this open us up to every time somebody disagrees with our FOIA requests? We're going to have to wheel and deal?
No, in this particular case, there was a mistake made. I just haven't been able to determine whether it was a mistake, miscommunication, misunderstanding, or whatever. Of the three issues that he had, we were okay on two of the three. One was who actually made the copies that came from the police department. And we mistakenly had Chief Bachman's wages in there. It should have been two of his other employees. We learned that was a mistake and we corrected the mistake. Anyone that gets, gets a form such as, that we do, because if it's over $50, we can ask them for a good faith deposit and before we produce it. And so when we send out this estimate that they disagree with it, they can always appeal it. So this is part of the law. And in this case, we made a mistake and we're just doing what's right and we're correcting that mistake in that one area. So in actuality, this is what the bill should have been originally. We just didn't calculate correctly. Okay.
I would say for the, for the benefit of the council members, Mr. Pratt lives right around the corner from me on Walnut Street. He and I have had several conversations in the past. I've been over there to look at the residence prior to the fence going up. I've been over there since the fence went up. As stated, the fence basically goes along the length of his garage. It doesn't meet up with anything in the back. It doesn't pulls off in the front. Due to previous zoning laws and ordinances, the, when the residence was built, there was no setback standard for where the garage was in relationship to the property line. And it subsequently was, was built within about six or eight inches of the actual property line. The fence does indeed hinder his ability to do any maintenance action or maintain the side of the building, but there's nothing that prohibited the, the other resident from erecting the fence.
Isn't it supposed to be 18 inches off the property line?
Three feet.
I have to be 18 inches off.
Unless you get a variance, it has to be three feet off the property line.
Okay. Mine might be 18 inches.
Since you put up yours, we had changes.
So, okay. So she has been sent a letter. I have not seen the letter, so. We had a survey and it now contends that the, if not the fence, at least the base concrete that was poured in approach to his property line.
Is the, just a quick question, is the Freedom of Information, the estimate worksheet, is that the actual cost?
The revised one, correct.
Correct.
The revised one is the actual cost. What it should have been the first time, we made a mistake and we were afforded an opportunity to rectify that mistake and we did.
I'm just trying to clarify estimate in my head, like it's, this, this is, this is the bill.
Right. This is our estimate of the cost based on what they provided us.
That's a picture of it. So, I turn around. So the fence is right in here. Yeah, right, right next to his garage.
Any other comment?
So the motion is to approve the revised cost estimate associated with Mr. Pratt's Freedom of Information Act request.
I'll make the motion.
Well, it's already made.
I just wanted to restate it before I call for a vote.
I guess before you do that, after the letter's sent, is there, apparently there's no timeframe given to the, to the, what's her name?
Well, I would just...
Well, I just, yeah.
I was going to point out to council that the, the agenda item that we're discussing deals with the FOIA request.
Okay.
Not the fence issue. They're too separate and you might want to just keep your comments as best you can to the agenda item.
Okay.
Any other questions? Please take a role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zelensky?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Mayor Smith, the developer of the North Channel Outlet building is here. He was in town having dinner, so he was able to come and I think he'd probably like to say a few words to council if that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Well, so this is good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, thanks for having me. My dinner was interrupted with a text that said, hey, you're late. Where are you? Seven o'clock to six o'clock, but thanks for having me. My name is John Grootheis and I'm managing member of the North Channel Investment Group, which is just north of the Edgewater project that we've been working on for a while. We have owned that building now for a couple of years. The condition of the building, I think as most people know, is blighted, there's obsolescence, the building was contaminated, and we found out there's a historic designation to the building. So when we're looking at what to do with that building, we had a couple of choices, obviously. Our first thought was demo the building, given the structural and other issues the building had, or we could rehab it. We began discussions with the MEDC back in January of 16. It's hard to believe it's now January of 17, but it is. During that time, the city was involved, great group to work with, by the way. Ed, Jeff, Denise, they had been very supportive and helpful in giving us guidance through the process. Been an interesting year in 16 as we went from a CDBG grant with the state and that application to a CRP program and then back to a CDBG grant and have submitted three applications with the state to get where we are today. So frustrating, but I think in the end of the day, it's going to be great for the community and great for that building. We started that application process in May and are just finishing up a financial review through the state at this point. So project cost, all in with financing, land cost over $4 million, so significant investment in that building. The CDBG grant, as you're well aware of, would be for $970,000. I think there's some money that was allocated to this administration, from what I understand, mainly dealing with ablighted issues and historical issues to bring the building back to where the society would like it to be. So kind of the route we had to take based on the designation. We couldn't demo the building, so we're stuck rehabbing it, thus the need for the grant. And it is very critical. This building would not happen without it. I mean, I can say that unequivocally. Where we sit right now, we're ready to go. We need to go a month ago because we have a brewery that's committed to the first floor. The clock is running on us to get them in there. As a part of their lease, we're going to incur penalties most likely if we don't get them in there on time. So just a little background in the building that I thought you might like to hear. The Edgewater Building, if you're interested at all, or probably other contractors will tell you two weeks, I'm going to double or triple that and say it's probably going to be a month until that, that's done and we'll start selling units there. So we're excited about what's happening on the other side of the river and appreciate you having me here tonight.
Thank you very much. Concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment on municipal services? We have none. Officials and staff. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City manager?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City finance director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Yes, I have one. Allegedly, there's a fence on Second and Walnut that needs to be addressed. There's, there's been a decision or a letter sent that supposedly had the fence removed, but is there a timeframe for that fence to be moved?
It's been understood when the weather was appropriate that it would be moved.
Thank you.
Yes.
If I could, everybody should have received a letter from the League of Women Voters on a March 9th meeting greet that they would like to host for city council members. If I could get a feel for how many people attend, plan to attend that event. Can I make a comment on that? Yes, you may. Okay. It's the League of Women Voters and thank you for that, bringing this up, scheduling the meeting at, I believe, 5:00, 5:00 to 7:00 PM on March 9th. I would ask if they could move it back to at least 6:30 for people to get home from work, have dinner with their families, discuss their date, and then come to this meeting. I'm going to throw that out there. Okay. If, if that can happen, would you plan to be in attendance? Yes. Aaron?
I'll be there.
Chip?
I believe my wife works, so I would not be able to, due to children.
I'll be there.
Okay. Since we'll have a quorum of council members at the meeting, I will coordinate with the League of Women Voters on the timeframe. We would schedule that as a special council meeting, then take a roll call. We'll have someone do that. You won't have to come for that, so. And we'll take no votes, come to no consensus, we'll respond to the questions, but that will take care of any requirements, I believe. Mr. Saylor, would that...
Exactly. I think that's exactly what, what we discussed, Mayor. I think that satisfies the...
Okay. If you can fill me in on the details of what I need to do, I'll see that that's taken care of.
Very good.
Okay. And thank everybody for your interest in supporting that. With that, I take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We'll go into our work session. Manistee City Council Work Session, Tuesday, January 24th, 6:15. Called to order. Work session item, public comments on work session-related items. Are there any public comments? Discussion on the 2017, 2018 budget? If not, we'll move on to the discussion.
No, I'm just going to give you some information that we called this work session to get council's input on priorities for the upcoming budget. Certainly, staff wants to craft a budget that is reflective of council's priorities. So that's the real reason that we have this meeting tonight is just to help staff understand what your priorities are and what you would like to see included in the budget. Probably that will allow staff to present a draft that's more reflective of your wishes. Wanted to start it off with some information from Ed, just giving you a little idea of where we are with the revenues and what's changed. So he's got a couple of slides he wants to go through.
So I think this process will be very helpful for staff in preparing the budget. It's certainly been done in the past, but I think it might be anything for us to add moving forward. So I just wanted to kind of go through several topics that have either been discussed in prior year budgets or discussed during the course of the year that staff thinks council is going to have some input and maybe some direction to help us shape that budget. So we'll kind of run through those. First of the general fund finances, this chart was out of the last budget and it just shows what we had projected, when we adopted last year's budget in terms of deficits moving forward. You can see we were projecting for the coming budget that we're going to be looking at over the next few months, a deficit of about $75,000. The takeaway, I think, from tonight is, and we're just very, very, very early in the budget process, but the fundamentals really haven't changed. And so I think we're going to be facing some challenges in this year's budget. I wanted to spend a little bit of time looking at this chart. This tracks the city's general fund fund balance going back to 1984. The key takeaway from this graph is that our fund balance, even though we had a sizable deficit for fiscal year end in 2016, is higher than what our fund balance was in 2007. 2007 was right before the Great Recession. And through the Great Recession, you can see from this chart, we actually grew our fund balance. And you might, you might ask, how is that possible? How did we actually grow our fund balance through the Great Recession? We have revenue losses, we have, still have inflationary expense pressures. And the answer is, we reduced headcount by almost 20%. That's, that is the short answer. Through consolidation of departments, reduction of the number of department heads, it's just as simple as that. And then more recently, we've had some planned budget deficits for a variety of reasons and we have drawn that fund balance down somewhat. But I just think this has kind of illustrated... But I just think this is kind of illustrative and speaks to the city's fiscal management and council's leadership, because there's a lot of communities that during that period from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve, that chart was going in the opposite direction. And we have been able to preserve most services and deliver them more efficiently throughout that period. That doesn't mean, however, this chart shows, that we don't have challenges moving ahead, and we don't have the luxury of being able to reduce headcount or reduce headcount for attrition, because we're pretty much at our minimal staff level right now. For fiscal year twenty sixteen, we had projected a deficit of about one hundred and twenty-three thousand, and our actual was one hundred and twenty-four thousand, so that came off pretty much right on target. And again, speaking to percentage of fund balance, which is our fund reserves as a percentage of our general fund operating expenses, it's almost identical to where it was in two thousand and seven, a few percentage points. So it just, you know, just illustrates the point that, you know, we've had some ups and downs, but we're, over the last ten years, we've kind of just maintained our status quo in terms of some of these metrics. Over that time period, as we've seen before, we've had seven straight years of negative taxable value growth, and our total property tax revenue is what it was about two thousand and seven. Same thing in revenue sharing, same story. We've lost over three hundred thousand dollars in revenue share from the world. It has ticked upside in the last few years. There's a big push to try to get some of that restored, and the governor in his latest State of the Union address actually talked about municipal finance a little bit, which is unusual. He hasn't done that much. And so M M L. was ready and has come out with some more information and said, you know, we're ready to partner with the state if we want to really take a look at municipal financing. So we've got an interesting one on the agenda coming up. So let's talk about what we're kind of progressing early looking at for the upcoming budget. Again, as I mentioned, the fundamentals haven't really changed. The story really isn't much different from what it was last time this year in terms of outlook. We are expecting our revenue to increase slightly year over year. That's not an unusual thing, particularly now that the tax base is kind of stabilized. We're hopeful for a slight increase in revenue sharing, but we won't really know until the sales tax numbers come in. And keep in mind, the revenue sharing is comprised of two components. One is the constitutional fees, which is set by formula and the legislature can't impact, and the other one is statutory, that they control by annual legislation. Property taxes, very, very early preliminary estimates of that our tax base is covering it all by around one percent, to give a take. Molly's working on the assessment role as we speak, and she won't have firm firm numbers on that until early March or very late February, but she'll refine those numbers that have been moved into the budget process. Payment of taxes, certain of those phase outs that were incorporated in both the Tyler and the Manistee contract are going to start to kick in, starting with the Manistee contract. We've got a couple of them already requested to be given the phasing those out, and so that'll have a slightly negative impact on our revenue moving forward. One bright spot in the budget is state reimbursement for Maple Street Bridge operations. That could be forty thousand dollars. If we staff the bridge differently, it could be upwards of over a hundred thousand dollars. So we're just going to have to kind of see how that legislation gets implemented. It did pass, and there's been a meeting of Hope Works Secretary, Jeff McCulley's been at that along, and I think with the city engineer, trying to understand how the state's going to implement that. So that could mean some additional reimbursement back to the general fund, which would be very helpful. General fund expenses, again, on the side of fundamentals, really haven't changed. You've got general inflation for things that we buy, whether it's electricity or supplies or fuel. Keep in mind, they, those sorts of things for municipalities typically grow at a faster rate than typical supplies, and maybe we buy them under general overall inflation rates a little bit. Then you also have wage inflation. Most of that's contractual, insurance, retirement costs, which we're talking more about. City Hall bond, it was designed to go up to kind of mirror the projected growth in our tax of values every year. Those payments got a little bit this year. It's going to be about a seven thousand dollar increase. And then depending on what city council decides on the trash hall, there's a potential impact on the general fund revenue to affect. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Quickly, on water and sewer, the rate study, we recommended rate increases of three point five percent. We have some other direction that's what we're planning on doing. That plan has worked out fairly well so far, and it's actually been very helpful in stabilizing the water and sewer utility. Right now, the biggest thing on the water and sewer side is that we're working through the ramifications of the new N P D E estimate and the state's corrective action plan to get rid of our last sewer outfall. That's going to require studying, it's going to require some remediation on stuff we find. For example, we've got some sanitary manhole covers that have perforations. I don't know if they need to be switched out for solid ones, but if they have to quantify how much water, that's going to take it out of the system to report that back to the state. But there's other things, whether there's flooding drains or roof drains that are connected or any other cross connections that we might find through the study or inflow and infiltration. And we're going to be having to systematically take those off so that we can design the final retention base and to be the most cost effective it can be. And then there'll be construction down the road in order to comply with that. That will require additional financing at some point, and we're still sorting through that. That's always been the case because this was such a big unknown. The one thing that we are trying to get a handle on right now is how much it's going to cost us actually to finish the study out, the stuff that's not covered by the saw grain so that we can size the retention base in properly. And then a bright spot is that with the addition of Manistee and eventually Tyler Contract, we should start to slowly increase our customer base, which will hopefully increase revenues. So the water and sewer fund is generally on pretty good, pretty good footing financially. The key thing there, though, is we have control of the revenues that come to the water and sewer fund, because we're required to raise rates to probably outrate in front of the system. We don't have that luxury on the general fund side. The possibilities for revenue raising in the general fund are extraordinarily limited. And when your two biggest pieces of revenue for the general fund are both seeing dramatic declines over the last ten years, it makes for challenges. Street fund, this, these two graphs show the conditions of streets from twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, and you can see they've generally held their own. There's been a slight decline. That's to be expected based on the amount of resources that are being invested back into the streets. We just are finishing up the annual report on the streets, which we should have here shortly, and we'll just shoot that to council, and it will be available on our website as well as at the counter. That's something we started last year and will continue to do that annually. Next year, we've got, if we follow the transportation improvement plan, there's a lot of work slated. Actually, it's going to happen this spring, I say next year, to major streets. So you should see these conditions improving in the next time we have an annual report. But generally, they kind of held their own. From a revenue standpoint, everybody is aware that the state legislature passed some enhancements for transportation funding. This is a graphic that was in the budget last year. We're expecting about a sixty-five percent increase when that package is fully phased in. So about ninety thousand dollars for the local streets and about two hundred and sixty-five thousand for the major streets. There's a lot of caveats with that, which I'll talk about a little bit. This chart here, and these numbers are straight from M B A. They revise them and will continue to look at them, and we'll have the newest numbers in the new budget. This is out of last year's budget, but this is, it's showing how that revenue increases from, you know, twenty fourteen up to twenty twenty-one. Let's get a feel for that. And that's primarily a result of higher gas taxes, the driving on the pump, and then also vehicle registration fees, which is the starting phase and kicking this year. But even with that increased state funding, more resources are needed to probably fund city streets. Our street plan anticipated needing at least six hundred thousand dollars just to kind of maintain the street network at its current level, maybe improve it slightly, and we're not there yet. In order to get there, you know, we'll need to look at some alternative funding sources. The state funding that we just talked about for a couple of slides ago does have some uncertainty with it, because a portion of that is going to be raised through an increased allocation from the state's general fund. They didn't put it all on the gas tax. And there's already talk in the legislature about phasing out income taxes and doing some things like that that is putting an extraordinary amount of pressure on the state's general fund. So at some point, something's going to have to give, and whether it comes out of revenue sharing in a way of no more increase or less increase than we hoped for, or it comes out of potential money that they're putting to our streets, we just don't know. There's a lot of that here. But I think, I think that the funding that we showed back here, that the state's projecting is, I don't want to say that's locked in by any stretch, because a lot of it is coming from the general fund, which the legislature has control of and they incorporate it. But it's the best information that we have at this time. Another thing I wanted to just review with you is the street ad hoc committee recommendations. Those were incorporated in the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget. I'll just kind of run through these briefly. One of the things they talked about is should we do a heavily override? So in other words, should we go to the voters and ask them to restore our milage rate to the twenty mils or something less than twenty mils, but above the current seventeen point seven that we're at? And the reason that we're at seventeen point seven is because of the changes in the property tax law and proposal that they went into effect, and it basically limits the growth rate of city taxes. But they did put a mechanism for the, for the city council, they chose to go to the public and ask them to override that rollback, to restore the mils to what was originally headed by the charter, and they used those funds for various purposes, including streets. At the time that this was first talked about by the street ad hoc committee, they said we shouldn't pursue that heavily override at this time, because we want to see some progress on the streets. But they did say future councils should consider maybe doing a heavily override once progress is demonstrated on the street network and the funding picture becomes clearer. And I think we've have two or three years now of working the streets, and we have the tip, and, you know, the state funding picture certainly has become clearer. But that's probably the only way we're going to be able to raise enough money to make a significant, meaningful impact on the streets and then be able to maintain that. So it's something that council will need to think about. Capital Improvement Fund, the recommendation was to commit eighty percent of the unobligated fund balance or unobligated annual revenue to streets, and that's been done. We also did a one-time allocation in year one. Their recommendation was to commit two percent annually out of the city's general fund. Current allocation is about seventy thousand or one point one percent. It's going to be very challenging to maintain even that level of funding, though, given the other pressures that are on the general fund and the lack of revenue growth. And so that's going to be something that we're really going to have to take a look at in order to balance the general fund budget. They recommended using a hybrid approach. We are using a hybrid approach, getting streams of money from all different, all different areas, grants, and so that's definitely the approach we're taking. They recommended increasing the spending rule allocation from the oil and gas fund to four, from four to four and a half percent for five years. That was not implemented. The oil and gas board was not in favor of that, and council did not choose to implement So I guess the takeaway out of streets is, we are planning on, in the budget again this year, updating the transportation improvement plan, which is that five-year rolling plan, putting some metrics in about how the streets have improved or not improved, as the case may be, and also, you know, listing the projects that are anticipated in that tip. Similar result we did in the last year's budget. And then if there's a desire to try to find some more funds in that, it's something that we'll need to look for. On the refuse fund, just a quick overview. Again, the refuse is funded in a hybrid process. It's got property taxes and it's got user fees. But our contract with our waste hauler has a two percent annual inflationary adjustment. So to the extent that our tax revenue doesn't keep up with that, we do have to raise rates on the users, and we've done that for the last few years. The fund balance is generally stabilized now, so we drew that down for quite a while, and now we've been stabilizing it, and I think we'll just continue to be able to do that. The real question for council on the refuse fund is the trash haul. It's to haul or not to haul. That's been something that the city's done for many years. Several years ago, we switch it to every other year. So we had a spring trash haul last spring. There's not one scheduled currently for this spring. The annualized cost of the spring trash haul is about forty-two thousand dollars. That's both city costs for our personnel and equipment and the cost for allied waste and emergency fees. Eighteen thousand of that on an annual basis goes to the general fund. So the question, and this was anticipated to be posed to council and had them make a decision as to whether we should continue a spring trash haul, or we should go with this once a month vault the item pickup, which we've been doing for the last year, where people have the ability to put out a vault the item on a first trash collection each month. It costs us seven hundred and fifty-five dollars a month for that to happen. So that's a question that council will need to answer and give some, some direction to staff as to whether they want to continue a spring trash haul or they want to do away with that and have the vault the item pickup or somewhere in between. Marina, we've talked quite a bit about the Marina. In a nutshell, the operations of the Marina aren't adequate to support their operational budget and their debt service. And as a result, we've had to use about sixty-five thousand from the capital fund to help offset that debt service on that Marina fund. The budget, nothing fundamentally has changed about it. There's going to be an effort to do some more marketing, which will help. A lot of it's dependent on weather, fishing, and fuel prices, none of which we have control over. The budget will continue to be extremely tight with very little cushion. On one positive note with the Marina, the interest in that upstairs meeting room is definitely increasing, and I know there's been quite a bit of activity looking at it. It doesn't generate a lot of revenue, but it certainly helps. And so that's, you know, the more we can imagine, the more people see the Marina, the more it helps with our revenue stream. But that's going to be something that, you know, we need to discuss, but I don't see any easy fix for this when they do our agenda. This chart was out of last year's budget, and it just shows the, this line here that is below is the transfers in, this is the amount of our debt service. And so you can see those are projected to be at that sixty thousand dollar level. Absent any significant changes. Ram'sel Theater, some big changes happened in the last budget. We leased it to the Ram'sel Regional Center for the hour and the presentation. And in the budget, the city adopted, it assumed that the allocation of the theater was reduced from ninety to seven, which it was. And then the projections that were in the budget showed that continuing to be reduced to sixty-five, sixty, fifty thousand over the next three years. I'm happy to report that the R R C A has raised over twenty thousand in donations and sponsorship so far since July first, and that's two-thirds of what we had budgeted, which was about thirty thousand dollars, and twice as much as the predecessor that this group raised in the last year. So that's a really positive start that, you know, there's been some pickups. We're still looking through some issues with some of our user groups, but generally, I think the response to that new group has been very positive. We have a new executive director slated to start in February, who's going to bring a lot of energy and maybe a different dynamic, which should help. So just wanted to kind of give you an update on where that was. This chart, again, is out of last year's budget, and it's just more for a historical perspective about the city's support for the Ram'sel Theater. At its peak, we gave four hundred and five thousand dollars to the Ram'sel Theater. Now, part of that was debt, about one hundred and eighty thousand. There was some capital costs in there, and there was some operational costs. We haven't had a capital allocation to the Ram'sel Theater from the Capital Improvement Fund in a number of years. That was eliminated. And our debt service is going down because the roof note has been paid off. We still have the H back note, which will extend out a few more years. But you can see the big, important thing to look at here is the operational subsidy, which has gone down from its peak of one hundred and seven thousand down to seventy thousand. And as we suggested, at least in the projections, the legislature has anticipated to go down more in the future years. And that's directly attributable to forcing the R R C A and the support, the people that support the Ram'sel to step up with donations and buy tickets and that sort of thing. So, I mean, it's trending in the right direction, for sure. Downtown Development Authority, you know, they do capture taxes in our downtown district, and absent any council action, that's going to sunset when the bond issue expires in twenty twenty. So those discussions with the D D A and with council and their board have been ongoing about the priorities, the level of reimbursement, and that's a conversation that's continuing to happen. Ultimately, too, as council knows, they must approve the D D A's budget. So there was some legislation passed in the layback section that is going to start to nibble away at the D D As, and that was the ability for libraries to exempt themselves out once obligations that are required on that expire, or if it's renewed. So in this case, it shouldn't have an impact on us until, if the D D A is renewed and they don't have any more, and that debt goes away, then there's a chance that the library could opt out. But they're still talking about doing comprehensive D D A tip reform at the state level, and that may happen in this next legislative year. We just don't know at this point. But that's an issue that we, you know, we need to, to work out, have those conversations, and we are having those conversations and, you know, just exploring things with the D D A board in terms of, you know, how can we work closer together on projects and maintenance and what's the proper reimbursement for that. Mirrors. Council has talked quite a bit about this. We did have a pretty long work session in August of twenty sixteen, so some of this may be repetitive, but I just wanted to, I think it's worth bringing back up again because I think it'll be a topic of conversation this year in the budget. Overall, our mirrors plans are relatively strong. We have reasonable benefits when compared with our peers. Our plan is reasonably well-funded. Some cost-saving measures have already been undertaken, and employees do contribute. However, our cost and unfunded liabilities are increasing, and it's going to put more pressure on our R pressure on our already tight, in particular, general fund budget. Quickly, we did some benchmarking over five years ago now. The trends in there are still valid because they don't, country plans don't change that quickly and everybody's kind of impacted similarly to market returns. But 10 different plans, not all MERS plans, like we're in, 42 divisions, covered over 1,000 workers. And the conclusions in that benchmarking study about the city's plan is that at the time, we're significantly better funded and it costs a lot less per active employee. We require higher employee contributions, we provided less generous benefits and we have no cost of living provision in our plan compared to our peers. That was the general takeaway from that exercise. And you can see here, you know, these are the MERS average funded and this is, I think, they're maybe 2015 data now, but this is what happens, the most recent data. So for as of the 2012 actuarial evaluation, which keep in mind, they lag 18 months typically because they, that's all MERS works. We were at 98% and the MERS average was at 80. For 2013, we were at 94.3, the MERS average was 79. And in 2014, we're at 92.3 in 90 to 99 percentile of all MERS plans. So we do have concerns. The liabilities are going up, the costs are increasing, but overall compared to the spectrum of MERS plans, we're not doing all that bad. The most recent actuarial valuation showed our unfunded liability of about 2.7 million. Previously, it was 1.3 million. And as a funded percentage, it went from 92.3 to 85.4. So I want to drill down on that a little bit. Our funded percentage would have been actually right around 90%. However, MERS changed their assumptions. So basically, they changed the rules in the game as to how they're calculating that liability based on a study that they had done. It's called an experience study. So through no fault of our own, our funded percentage dropped by 4% because MERS kind of changed some of those guidelines. Also, we're still factoring in 2008 losses because they factored those in over a long time period. On the flip side, the gains that we've had since 2008 are also being factored in, although they're being tripled on a slower basis. So some of that should start to turn around a little bit or at least trend in that way by those higher returns that we've had since then. You might have remembered in the audit, there was a number just north of 4 million, which was the GAZB 68 unfunded liability. And I just want to point out, that GAZB 68 number is simply a reporting requirement that the government standards, the Government Accounting Standards Board requires us to put in. It's calculated entirely different than this. And this 2.7 million number is what MERS uses in order to calculate what our costs are. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there. And I'll go into that a little bit more when we're doing the budget document to explain that, but it's just a change of accounting convention. But with all that said, Manassas is not the only community, not more immersed community that has these changes impacting them. And believe me, MERS is hearing from all those communities because it's driving everybody's costs. And so it's something that we're going to have to manage, we're going to have to deal with, and we're going to have to figure out, you know, how we do that moving forward. But I just thought it was important to kind of get the information out there and reiterate what we talked about back in August about the overall condition of the plan. This chart, again, just kind of shows our country history. You can see as early or as late as 2011, we were over 100% funded. So this, these unfunded liabilities have accelerated. And again, a lot of that's the 2008 losses that are being factored in plus the changes in MERS assumptions. And those can change if returns increase. That's the primary thing that drives these funded budgets. And again, this chart just shows contributions over a calendar year. And you can see back in 2004, before we went to MERS, we were paying, you know, $225,000 and that's where we are now in 2015 roughly. But that is going to grow up because of the changes. This big gap here would be resources that the city was able to use for other things by switching to MERS and saving a bunch of money about moving forward, deciding to catch back up. So that's kind of the highlights of what we wanted to go over and kind of, like we said, set in the table for the discussion on priorities and how can we incorporate those into the budget and get some of that direction upfront probably undoubtedly will make the budget process a little bit easier going through. We'll hopefully met those expectations when we're putting the budget together.
So now it's up to the council to let staff know some of your priorities, if we can get kind of a consensus of what you would like to see emphasized in the new budget.
Sustainable is best we can in the future.
Right. And I know there's been a lot of talk about the use of, somebody said five times, we used unsustainable in the last year's budget. And that usually grabs all the attention, unsustainable. And that's coupled with the priorities of the time. So, you know, so either the priorities change or our revenues increase or whatever, but there's going to have to be some change. You were just pointing out last year that given those priorities, the council continues with those same priorities going forward, it's going to be difficult to sustain that going forward. So we either have to come up with more revenues or adjust or come up with new priorities.
So Mr. Redford, if I understand this correctly, we can't continue to use our fund balance to balance the budget. Do we need to stop doing that or can we?
No, I mean, there's no prohibition about using fund downs. There isn't. That doesn't mean you should draw it down to low levels that don't allow you to have that cushion if you need it. It would be nice to get to the point where we're not using fund downs. It'd be nice to get to the point where we're starting to restore that. And we think we have a target of 20%. We're below that target, but the 16.2% isn't unhealthy by any stretch. I wouldn't like to see it sit much below that. Because unexpectedly, things do come up and that's what that's there for. And interest rates are starting to go back up. So if we have more fund downs, we're going to start to turn a little bit more interest down.
So would that be a place to start the budget, budgeting, talking about the budget processes to not tap into that fund balance?
I think that would be a perfectly reasonable thing for council to ask staff to come up with. That may require some changes in your priorities as the city venture on really to. But I don't think that's an unreasonable, an unreasonable starting point.
I would entertain that direction. I think we get to a point, the last three years have been drawn from the fund balance to balance the budget. We had our communications, we discussed from the state in our last session where they pointed that out. They call it deficit spending. I call it balancing when you take from your savings to make up a shortage of revenue. But I think at a point in time, we have to look at living within the revenue stream that we have unless we have an unusually large things like the NTPS permit that is coming up in a CAC patient. When we have some outsized obligations that are well beyond absorbing into the budget, I think we really need to look at living within our revenue. Would that require some changes? I think so. But the oil and gas was, the board concurred with the 4% spending rule, $390, which is virtually flat from last year. And a huge part of that, a majority percentage of it's obligated to debt service anyway. So that, you know, there's very little to use as far as capital improvements or towards streets. We might be relatively healthy with MERS in comparison to a number of pure cities. But I've looked at it, you know, in the last eight years, we put $1.4 million into MERS. We're going to put that much in it in the next four years. So half the period of time, same amount of money. That's the fastest rising cost we've got in the budget. And with our unfunded liability, I can assure you, it's a concern to me. If it was my personal budget, I'd be worried about it. So, you know, what is the solution? I look at a number of things we do and we've got essential services. The absolute last thing I want to do is impact services and personnel. We're at a point personnel-wise in the city that backs up to, what about the 2008 point in FTE, about 54.5? I mean, it was much higher than that going back further, but I mean, in recent history, we're about at that point. You know, if we are to maintain the services that we provide to citizens, we're going to have to keep those people. We're going to have to figure out how we're going to do that. That's certainly going to be a challenge. Appropriations, we spend about $180,000 a year on appropriations. I think those need a real scrub down on where they're going. You pointed out a positive on the Ramsdale. 2017 was the last payment on the roof note for the Ramsdale. But the heating and cooling system doesn't go away until 2027. We talk about the marina and supplementing the marina, which is not a break even operation. But I believe if we take the debt service off to the PNC Bank, a term loan would be pretty close to break even on the marina.
Close.
So you know, that's another situation where it looks like it's not making money, but it probably is marginally making money and it's improving. We have more boat days this year and more revenue than we have in recent years. We made more money in the boat launch because we finally got a pay tube installed out there. And I think that will pay dividends going forward too. One interesting thing about the budget, you know, projecting a $75,000 draw from the fund balances is not something I would like to see. I would like to see us look at what cuts or what delays we could make in equipment, what appropriations aren't absolutely necessary to citizen services here in the community. I'd like to see us balance the budget and keep the fund balance going because if the projections that were given in last year's budget would hold true and if we held the course that we have right now, we'd draw that down to under half a million dollars by 2020. That's certainly not a direction I want to go.
Okay, so what I, to curdle a number of ideas and one of them was no use of fund balance to balance the budget. Is that kind of a consensus of council to look at that? Can we do that? Our intent is, is that when we, we can work towards that and we can come back with a budget that uses no fund balance and we can, we can take, ask the council to look at what we had to cut out of that and see if that's what they are happy with. Or we can take the other approach of we're using fund balance and here's some areas that you want to remove so we can get down to where we're not using fund balance. So it's just a preference I would rather see. Do you want us to put together your priorities and say here, we're a little into the fund balance, we can cut here or just come back with a flat out, no use of fund balance? Like you know what we're sacrificing to do that?
I would like to see a budget without tapping into the fund balance. If we don't do that, then we're not, we can't move ahead. We got, we're never going to have money for streets. We're never going to have money for anything. We don't start cutting that back somewhat, so that would be my preference.
We can do that. Any other priorities?
I think this year, we're scheduled for this trash haul, aren't we Jeff? No?
It was last spring.
No, I thought it was uneven. We didn't. We didn't have it last year.
I think it's the spring when I looked it up.
I thought about my staff, so I thought it was about here. You guys didn't talk trash haul?
Yes, we did. I think we did.
Yes, they do.
It's not scheduled for this spring.
Right. Okay. Well, I mean, we can look at that going forward too. It's $44,000 and then an additional $9,000 with the one bulky item at the beginning of the month. It's $53,000. This for trash haul. We should look at that and seriously consider taking the spring trash haul away.
Stop pledges though.
I mean, for future, if I'm not here, we can, but I thought it was this year, so. We didn't have it last year.
We're not going to have it in this fiscal year that we're in.
Correct. And that, yeah, that's to be clear on that. It's not in this fiscal year. It would be in the budget that you're considering.
So, yeah. Our, the budget we're working on, if council, does council want us to leave that in or take it out?
Take it out.
Is there some consensus there?
I agree with what I picked up. Is there any data from Republic on that how much bulk pickup they're doing the first of the month, how well that perceived?
They don't report it.
They do. Just as they haven't reported it, we could ask. The feedback at the counter seems to be positive.
But the way I look at it, there is an option. I mean, you could sit up putting it out at one time a year, you're putting it out on a monthly basis and it's still going away. I mean, it's not like you have to store it forever.
Well, that was, that was one of the thoughts behind doing the bulky item is it's, for certain people, it may be more convenient because I get a new pad, I want to put that out, I don't want to store it for 12 months, you know, if it happens to be right after spring trash haul is done. So it's just, I guess, a preference.
So you're looking at a little over $9,000 a year, right?
Right. $9,060.
Yeah.
Compared to?
Compared to 42 or 44?
Yeah.
4,000.
Better than 40,000.
You know, plus that, taking into consideration too, the load on the employees and the equipment. You know, that's not figured in on that $44,000. The wear and tear on the equipment. The wear and tear on the equipment and wear and tear on the guys.
We get reimbursement. And that will be, if we take it out, that'll carve another $18,000, you know, less of revenue for general fund. That's not to say we can't manage that or run that, but that's just the reality of it. But it saves the 40-some thousand, you know, from the refuse fund. And at that point, that's going to make the refuse fund, the finances much better and probably more than any rate increases. So that's, I mean, that's a good thing for the taxpayers.
Any other priorities for council that you'd like us to consider while we're drafting the budget?
Well, you know, when we're looking at these revenues and stuff, didn't you have a slide on here that showed forward to 2020 on fund balances and? Okay. So our $75,000 this year is going to double for 19 and increase to get, that's why I'm interested in moving now from not taking from the fund balance. We've done that for the last three years. I think we need to get out of the habit of doing that and figure out how to live without that because going forward, we're going to have to make some more adjustments because the need continues to grow. And if our revenue doesn't pick up, if we don't retire some debt and we don't free up some money, I mean, this doesn't going to allow us anything for streets this year, anything additional. And I'm just looking at the numbers and if, if we say we're not going to take $75,000 from the fund balance and we don't have anything from the capital improvement fund because the oil and gas money is pretty much consumed. We didn't get 2% from the general fund last year. I wouldn't expect to get it this year for streets. It's going to be, be pretty thin going forward. But again, I'm very focused on our people and the essential services that we provide and public safety, in public works. We certainly need to start looking at ways that we can save money in the future.
In terms of the roads that council remembers, we did about $140,000 million fill this year we're going to be doing. I can't remember, it's a large amount of money for thin overlay in the spring, plus we're going to be doing 12 streets. So there's quite a bit that's been.
We're going to get quite a bit done this year. Yes, I understand that, but I'm, you know, I'm just saying going forward.
We'll still have monies in the next budget to put towards roads.
And when we look at the millage, you know, as I shared with you from attending the school board meeting, schools considering at least talking about the potential for a millage, for a sinking fund and to knock down the old high school and do some other things in the future. Six, eight months ago, we talked about the potential for a new fire truck, which would most likely require a millage because those are very expensive. Look at possibility for a street maintenance millage on top of that and I can see some real challenges going forward, getting people to embrace all of those changes and they're all going to compete with each other. So you know, we need, we need to pay attention to some of those. I have concerns about millage. The, in some instances, the people get the idea that a millage replaces general fund or other funding sources to do things when I would think we'd have to have a map from the city if we asked for a millage. We'd have to show that the city itself is invested in the streets also and obligating some funds before we ask people to put more of their money into. some funds before we ask people to put more of their money into, to a potential millage. Kind of a partnership in developing the community and, and running through the apartments, but I can appreciate the hard work is ahead.
So, just, is there anything more? We have no use of fund balance and eliminate spring trash haul. We can work it, you know, both, both into the budget, grant funding.
I saw a note that we received some information from MERS on, on legacy cost and stuff and if we change systems, a staff note, that there was some MERS information received.
Well, Ed has received some information from MERS, he just hasn't had the time, to my knowledge, to digest it.
We requested what they call our estimate, those things, so it's understandable, but I haven't had a chance to go through them, but I'll find you the comment and see. Any changes to MERS would require an actuarial valuation, but they streamlined this process to try to give communities, because communities are recommending that, to be able to get an idea of what that might cost. Just to kind of clarify, we, we have made some previous reforms to the pension system. Steel workers have a lower multiplier for all new hires and they actually, the city contribution for the new steelworkers is cap. Both the police unions now have a slightly lower multiplier. We didn't get anything in the last fire contract and we're looking at making similar changes to the non-union pension at some point here, similar to what the steelworkers have, more than likely. So there have been some changes that have been made in the past and the question is, you know, what, what does it mean moving forward? So there's, there's a few options. One is, you can, you know, continue to look at the benefit level and/or ask employees to pay more for their pension, require contributions. That's one option. You can eliminate defined benefit plans for new hires, which some communities have done. It's very, very difficult and not a possibility for public safety, although I know the state police did it. That's typically not done in, in communities that way, you know, cities and stuff. They typically hang onto those defined benefit pension, often they take that to arbitration because they don't get social security and so that defined benefit pension is supposed to fill in that gap. That's not to say it can't be done, but it's challenging. Those are typically the two ways that people look at pension reform. When you close divisions to new hires, you tend to pay more in the short term. You eliminate any increase in the liability for additional years of service, you don't guarantee that that liability won't go up because it's still tied to market.
So dependent on market.
But you eliminate any new service generating liability on the road. But it can drive your cost of hire in the short term potentially than what you can pay by keeping the file and having new hires going. So there's a lot of different ways to skin the cap. Just depends on, you know, what makes sense, what the community wants, what council feels is appropriate, and we can look at all of those. And that's why we just kind of started that process a little bit ahead of time, kind of get a feel for what that might mean. And we'll be having more discussions on that and incorporating that potentially into the budget, just as an option.
I hear you correctly, too, and I heard you talk about this before, that our revenue's gonna stay fairly flat. If you look into the future, it's gonna be fairly flat. It's just kinda...
There's nothing that gives me any hope that the state's gonna restore revenue sharing, which is our second biggest piece of our revenue. And because of the way Proposal A works, the interaction between Proposal A and the headlay amendment, it's very difficult to gain taxable value unless you have new development, new taxable development. So we've got a lot of development interest going on. Some of it's gonna be fully taxable, Chippewa cottages, you know, they're supposed to be breaking ground on those relatively soon. That'll be fully taxable, that will help. Beautiful development that we talked about earlier here today, putting a lot of money into the city infrastructure through the tax capture, millions of dollars, but none of that flows to the general fund because of the tax exemption from the tax capture. Doesn't mean that's not a benefit, doesn't mean that that's gonna be, not be a draw to the city, but it's not like somebody built a brand new house and pays the whole front in taxes. So until we get some more development, new construction additions, it's gonna be difficult to have the taxable value increase like it did when we were building our Hellwood Village. The other thing to keep at mind is, is just because you got a lot of properties selling, doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna capture a whole bunch of that new revenue in taxes. It depends on the gap between the assessed and the taxable value, what that assessment becomes. I mean, yes, they come on cap, but at some point, you can end up getting heavily low taxes because of that. So it's a complex interaction and those are our two biggest pieces of our revenue, property taxes and state revenue share. And since some large increase in those or a way, a change in the way the state funds local communities, it's going to continue to be a challenge. There's, there's no way to sugarcoat that. I'm hopeful that the governor is serious about his ideas of looking at how to strengthen local communities and look at the municipal finance, but he's six years into his eight year term. If he doesn't get it done this year, it's not gonna happen in the next year, more than likely. And, you know, he probably should have done that eight years ago. He had that everything, I guess, through the legislature was looking at. So we are gonna have to be creative, we're gonna have to be smart about the services we're providing, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make cuts, I mean, is the only way to put it. I, I don't think that we're gonna be able to grow our way out of this. And that's not to be pessimistic, I think it's just the reality in the short term.
That's, that's true. You know, and for all I say about the, the retirement costs and stuff like that, you know, I'd like to point out that, you know, in, in looking at other budget, 57% of the payroll at Cadillac is, is fringe benefit. So ours is only 31%. We do a pretty good job in, in containing those costs, but the cost is rising. That percent is, is changing and it's projected to change quite a bit in the next few years. And, and I know part of that's on the smoothing. It's hard to believe that we're still talking about still incurring losses from 2008. You know, most people that, that have stocks took their loss in 2008 to move forward. But the MERS smoothes their profile over a period of time and assesses those losses over a great period of years.
They do that as well as with the gains. And the reason for that is it's twofold. One, to help communities not have big spikes of decreases in their budgetary amounts. So it helps for the budget and point two, MERS has a perpetual time horizon, right? 50-year time horizon because, you know, these defined benefit plans were always assumed to stay open and that you spread those costs out over a lifetime or the working person's career, plus you've got new people coming into the system. And so to take a snapshot, which is what the GAZRE 68 kind of is forced to do on, at least on your financial statements, you're gonna get big fluctuations where this is an effort to kind of smooth those out, make it manageable. And unfortunately, we had those downturns in 2008. People are living a little bit longer, although just recently that, that reversed. So probably the next experience, probably will reverse those trends. And, you know, we're, we're experiencing some negative pressures on the budget because of it. It's not to say those are gonna last indefinitely, but it's also not to minimize the fact that it's putting pressure on the budget because they also will be...
Any other? We look forward to working through the, through the budget with staff and having some interesting work sessions offered. With that, most adjourned.
I don't know, I don't think they were looking at it that way, Mr. Mayor. I think they were looking at the fact that we've drawn down our fund balance for three years. I'm not sure that they're actually looking at as to what we've actually budgeted. The state is very concerned about communities getting into financial and fiscal distress. They have a number that are under emergency management. We're nowhere near that and we don't intend to go, to go there. But what I will say is, four or five years ago, the state was toying around with like a 12-step checklist where they would look at the financial statements, they would check boxes and if you had, you know, a certain number of these metrics that they were looking at, which is kind of an early warning indicator for fiscal distress, they were thinking about implementing something like that. And they, they did have some of those exposure drafts out there for communities to comment on, but nothing ever came of that. And I ask that of Treasury as well. So I think what they've done is they've probably looked at their already existing internal processes, which is to review all the audits that are submitted to the state for certain things, and then maybe added a little bit to that and, you know, they, if they see that a community's run of death, that they just are kind of reaching out to say, hey, didn't know if you were aware of that. It's kind of how I read that when I talked about...
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Reddick. I will move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is your opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance should be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment? And we'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City manager?
Just wanna remind council and as well as the community that on Friday, this Friday at 10:30 at the Vogue, the city's gonna receive their redevelopment-ready community certification. And it's quite an honor. We're one of only nine communities in the state that's received that certification. So I encourage you to come to the Vogue Friday, 10:30 in the morning and celebrate with us.
Thank you. City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Our city finance manager?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public works director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Do we have public safety here? City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman Cooper?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I will likely be gone for the first two meetings scheduled in February. I will be in St. Louis, Missouri, helping my daughter, she's having her first child.
DPW, Jeff?
Yes.
Is, how are we doing with our maintenance records? Have we purchased software or?
We have not purchased the software. We've been keeping paper records now and have a file system. The, because we've got a new mechanic and he joined us after that budget was approved, I'm giving him some time to evaluate what system would work best for him.
I just, I see the trucks going down there. He's, he doesn't go pick up parts, he has the people delivering to him.
He's running a very efficient operation and if you look at our, our supplies in, in public works, it's, it's a little bit higher because he's doing a lot of preventative maintenance, he's got everything up to speed, he's got delivery systems with all of our vendors, so they're bringing everything to him so he doesn't have to spend the day going out to them. He's doing a very good job.
So what I hear you're saying is you just haven't had time to get that, that part rolling yet.
Well, I've made him aware that we've got two, actually two purchases under the motor pool. One is for diagnostic software, the other one was for tracking software, you know, for the fleet maintenance. And I, so he's well aware of that, that we've got that money budgeted and, and why we budgeted. And so for the diagnostic equipment, he wants to get through the winter to see how much demand there is for it. Certainly when you have different people, old mechanic, new mechanic, they've got different opinions on it. So I told him to give him the winter to, to, for him to evaluate that. It's our biggest demand on maintenance.
It's fair, he's the one that's gonna use it.
And then he's got a system prepared now that he's worked with in the past for maintaining paper copies. And so I told him, once we got through the wintertime, we'd be able to sit down and look at how, you know, maybe it's an iPad where he can get that software and, and be able to use it without spending a lot of time at a desk typing in the stuff, so.
Thank you. Hey, Jeff? With that window of cold weather that we had last week, we had any freezes?
On the water system? Not that we're aware of.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything, nothing, Your Honor?
Saturday, Mayor Proton Valinsky and I were able to attend a regional fisheries workshop at West York Community College. It was very refreshing to note that in a survey that was accomplished during the 2016 fishing season, people that came to Manistee to fish expressed the highest degree of satisfaction of anyone along the shoreline in Michigan with the results of their fishing experience in the city of Manistee. We beat Luddington by, by about half a point on a, on a one to five scale. So people have, have reported excellent results and satisfaction in coming to Manistee to do their fishing this last season. A really noteworthy thing, and we talked to the Harvard Commission today about using such information in a positive marketing scheme. I'd like to thank all of the citizens in attendance for coming out tonight. Please drive careful on the way home, it might be slippery. And with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
I make it.